It's seven o'clock. No, called to order the April 19th regular meeting of the Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Mr. Kuzkudus.
Here.
Mr. Severopolis.
Here.
Mr. Vessi. Mr. Morgan.
Here.
Ms. Veehill.
Yeah.
Mr. Kulianos.
Here.
Mr. Androtis.
All right, we have a quorum. Item number two on the agenda is approval of the minutes of our February 22nd, 2021 meeting. Do I hear any comments or emotion?
I make a motion to approve minutes.
I second that motion.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kulianos.
Yes.
Ms. Veehill.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Severopolis.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkudus.
Yes.
Mr. Seaman.
Yes. That brings us to item number three, the quasi judicial announcement and swearing in of speakers.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the planning and zoning board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any members of the board wishing to disclose any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak this evening, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So sworn.
All right, that brings us to item number four, application number 20-139. It's site plan approval for a car wash and gasoline sales at 39-522 and 39-468 US Highway 19 North in the Highway Business zoning district.
I will share my screen. This is an application for a site plan approval for the Big Dan's Car Wash. And this is located on US 19 where the Japanese restaurant and the adult store, variety store there are located. So those are two properties, they'll be combined into one property. Those two buildings will be removed. The billboard that you see there will remain. So this includes redevelopment, it's a total redevelopment of that site, 2.2 acre site. It's includes a little over 5,000 square foot car wash, vacuum spaces, gasoline sales for the members or the people who get their car washed, and then parking and stacking space for vehicles and vehicular movement. We're reducing the driveways on US 19, as you can see in this picture, from three current driveways down to one. The new driveway will essentially be in that spot where that current middle driveway is. And public art will be satisfied with an in lieu fee payment. And they're going to be doing buffering of the adjacent rear residential area with the storm by placing the stormwater pond over there and doing a buffer there. I know they went through a couple iterations of the site plan and had the car wash building back by that rear property line, but they've reconfigured it so as to reduce the impacts to the neighbors and provide a better working of the site. So this is the layout. Here's 19 to the right and the neighborhood here to the west. And this overlays on an aerial. You can see that it's the Woods at Anderson Park neighborhood to the west. There's an animal hospital to the north and her rentals property to the south. This is the landscape plane. So you can see the stormwater pond has to be planted, plus they have to have that eight foot buffer and screen back there. This is just a rendering of how the site will look. You're looking towards US 19 from the northwest. So like the Woods and Anderson Park would be on the right-hand side here and 19 would be out where it looks like there's water. And then these are some of the elevations provided by the applicant of how it's, the building will look. Again, additional elevations. And staff is recommending approval of this resolution with minimum criteria of meeting the code, all applicable requirements of the code, paying all required fees and getting that final DOT permit for the revised driveway configuration. I will note that your staff report on page one has an error that talks about wetland preservation and mitigation. That was just a leftover from an old staff report, I apologize. This project had no wetlands or wetland impacts. It will have, if you look at that site, it's not completely developed. There, there are some trees in the back and they will have to comply with the city's tree ordinance on that. So we've already coordinated that. And without, is there any questions?
Any commission members have questions for the staff?
I do. Had, did they show you any kind of viability study or business plan related to this project?
No, they included a business narrative of how it's going to operate.
Okay, so so we don't know the viability of this project and how much of that is predicated on the sale of gas?
No, I believe the applicant is in attendance, so we could.
Okay. Because I drove by there today and there's on Klosterman and US 19, three of the four corners have gas stations. There's also a gas station less than a quarter mile from it north, the Chevron Station. So within a probably less than a quarter, a quarter, a little maybe over, a little over a quarter of a mile, there are four gas stations already existing there.
So can I ask a question? What, what would a business viability study have to do with any of the criteria for approval of a site plan?
I'll get to that. So you know, the question is, the question that, that that comes into my mind is that are we, and I think this is with any project we do, are we better off with the existing? Is, is the property going to be better off as a result of the, the project? And then we also have to look, and, and the reason this is, this is relevant is, and I don't know who asked me that question, is it the city attorney asked me that question?
Yes, because as this is a site plan review, you're required to meet the standards of the criteria. And if you meet the standards, they have a right to the project. So my question is.
Why are they here? Why are they before us? If they have the right. I'm asking a question, I'm not, not trying to be.
My, my question to you was, what does the, what does it, as long as it's a use that can be had underneath the code and it meets the criteria, what does it matter if it's a viable business plan? And that was my question to you, what criteria does that go to inquiry about a viable business plan?
Because if, if the project's not viable, if the, if there's, if there's questions of viability and we, are we better off in, in the city with a vacant Japanese restaurant? Are we better with vacant gas tanks? And the environmental issues that come with those, because.
What criteria does that go to? And I'm, I'm just saying that so that the board understands that I need to know where you're coming from on that. Because remember, this is a site plan review where you're bound by criteria in the code. So my, my question is, what criteria does that go to?
Well, I think viability matters. I don't, and I have, Chairman, do I have a right to discuss viability?
And maybe I can help a little bit, which is, hopefully the applicant can talk about that. I believe this is a kind of a special package and maybe they can talk about it. The car wash is, is very important. I was given the impression maybe almost more important than the gas. The gas is, so it's, so it's a, it's a model that they, I guess, have used in other places and you can ask that. And then on the site plan approval, you're correct, in, in a lot of jurisdictions, site plans for uses by right do not go through a hearing process. In fact, this is the first place I've worked where it does. Our code requires site plans to go to this board and to the Board of Commissioners, but it doesn't change what, what the city attorney just said as far as there.
So is this a permitted use?
It's permit, yeah, yeah, our code calls it permitted, yeah, which is by right. But yeah, maybe the applicant can help us with that business model of what they were looking at, just for information for the board.
Just a question to the attorney. As, as I understand it, our options are pretty limited and, and very restricted by the code. If the, if the proposed site plan in our eyes complies with all of the code requirements and checks all of those off, which is apparently what staff is telling us they do, what it is really, we don't have the right to comment on under the ordinance as it exists, is that?
Right, so that was, that was why my, I had my question is, if you can tell me what criteria or what portion of that, of the business viability goes to what your determination is to be made here today, then, then I can understand that. That's why I'm asking the question. I just don't see how any business valuation or, or the marketing plan or the business plan of the applicant has anything to do with the criteria that this board is to consider to see whether or not it meets the criteria to recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners or to recommend denial to the Board of Commissioners.
They were, they're permitted to have gas pumps, is that what you're saying? They are permitted to have gas pumps? So that's not a question here?
No.
Yeah, they are.
Yes, they, they've proposed the car wash and the gas pumps.
So it's, it's a permitted use, whether it's a gas station, just a gas station, it's permitted? If the car wash is just permitted? So they're both, they're both permitted uses?
That's correct.
I think I understand too with, with, you know, Mr. Kulianos is saying is if they, if they meet all the city criteria and we're just here to say, okay, it meets the criteria, let's go home. It's like, why is it even on an agenda item? If it's, you know, what, what's the, what's the benefit of adding input? If.
We can't discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm not being critical of, of, of anybody or, or staff or anything, but you know, it's, what, what purpose are we serving as a board? If it's just a matter of, okay, meets it, why are we here? Let's just go home.
Well, I can tell you from a legal perspective, this board serves two functions. One, you're an advisory board to the Board of Commissioners on applications that come before you. And two, you're the local planning agency for the city of Tarpon Springs. So you know, you have the ability to look through the code, make recommendations and changing on the planning and zoning code and, and things of that nature to the Board of Commissioners.
This is a site plan, this is not a.
And I understand that. The, the staff report is just that, it's a staff report and a recommendation to you based on the staff's investigation and the analysis through the code. What this board's job is to do is to take the evidence presented by the applicant in consideration with the staff report and figure out if there's enough evidence to support the approval of a site plan. And then make that recommendation to the Board of Commissioners one way or the other. So you, you don't have to just rubber stamp staff's report. You, you know, you have the ability to have, make inquiry, but the inquiry does need to be to the relevant competent substantial evidence that would be used to either support or contradict the criteria within the code. That was the only reason I was asking the question about the, the business viability is that, that leads to the economics of the project. That's not really part and parcel to whether or not it meets the criteria in the code and whether it's a use that can be done either as a matter of right or, or otherwise.
Well, the, looking at the rendering, the gap, I mean, there's 10 gas pumps there. Or, yeah, it looks like there's two per, per stall. So obviously the gas looks like a pretty important part of the project. And whether we need more gas pumps in Tarpon Springs or not, it's, I guess, is irrelevant per the city attorney and the, and this board.
I have a question. What is the criteria for the disposal of the water and I don't know if the runoff of the gas? Because with an animal hospital being right next door, you wouldn't want that to go into the land. I mean, is there a proposal or something along those lines that shows how they're going to make sure that that doesn't rest, I guess, the next door neighbor?
Yeah, the gas tanks and containment system and all the, the items that go with that are permitted by the state. Our fire marshal has reviewed what they have and he has approved the site plan as shown. Obviously with building permit, they'll have a lot more detail than you're seeing here on all the fixtures and, and details of, of the construction. And then we do have an approved stormwater management plan for the site, which, which went through a couple of rounds. They had to do some revisions for our city stormwater consultant. And he's satisfied that they will be able to meet the stormwater requirements. Our stormwater requirements are a little bit more stringent than the water management districts. So they need water management permits plus our approval for stormwater.
I do, I do, I do have a site plan question. And maybe I need to look at it a little bit more closely, but you know, car washes, I think they have what they call an oil separator. When, when you wash a car and the, and the, you know, is there a, a place on the, of the site plan where, where the oil runoff from having your car washed, it's, it's, there's a separator and a recycler where a lot of the water is recycled to, in car washes? So I don't know, maybe I, maybe the applicant can, can address that. But I didn't, I don't remember seeing that on the site plan.
I see reclaimed water tanks
Okay.
under there, which would be part of that system.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I don't see.
Yeah, I've got better eyes than I do, so.
And I do know our utilities department did require that to be addressed during TRC, but I'd have to look to see if that's shown at this level and where it would be, and perhaps the applicant could help.
Because I don't know if it's a self-contained system is, I guess, my question, a lot, you know, on a car wash. If, if you know what I'm talking about, when you wash the car, the water comes off, it goes below. It's either recycled, it's something has to separate the water from the oil. So I don't know if that's self, if that's a self container, that's something different on the site plan. Where do you see the reclaimed water?
This sheet here, there's the, this is reclaimed tanks. So they are recycling the water, it appears. They've got to separate it to be able to reuse it, for sure.
I don't know if that's a separate tank or that's in that system.
I know the requirements from the Water Management District are pretty strict on this kind of thing.
Yeah. But I know if the applicant can answer that, that's a simple question.
Are there any other questions for staff?
I do, I have a question. On the site plan, it says underground gas tanks to be permitted separately. So how's that, is that going to come before the board again? Or is that going to be just handled through planning and zoning?
That's, I think that's environmental permitting.
The, yeah, so the applicant must obtain a permit from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection.
Right.
And of course they'll need building, to meet all the building code. That's the separate permitting and they were highly encouraged to go ahead and, and start that process. I believe they have started that process because it's an important component to get, get everything straight.
And also I have another question. In the business narrative, they've got like vacuums for customers only. Gas pumps are for customer use only, meaning they have to go through a car wash in order to get gas or fill up their, their gas. So are they gonna tell people to leave if they just want to get gas? Or if they want to vacuum their vehicles? Do they tell them to leave? I mean, how's that work?
That's a good question for them. I think to do, my impression is to do anything in the site, you have to go through their little scanner thing.
A little selective, you know, for customers in general?
I can't comment on that one way or the other. Apparently it's a selection that they want to make.
So if they were here.
Yeah, I mean, apparently that's, that's their business, the way the business works. You know, they start out with that this will be the first one of these in Tarpon Springs. I think they say maybe Pinellas County, so.
Clearly states, we will not allow any street retailer to use our gas pumps, period. That's, yeah.
Pat, this is Mark from Zoom, just to let you know, we do have several raised hands throughout.
All right, well, if there's no further questions from the commission, we go to public comments, correct?
I would ask for the applicant to give their presentation.
Oh, applicant first, yes. Okay, would the applicant like to give a presentation?
So I do have several raised hands, do you want me to check to see if any of these are the applicant?
Yes, the applicant, the engineer representative is Ravi Alur. Is he in the meeting?
Yes, he is, I'll allow him in. If you can state your name and address for the record.
This is Ravi Alur with Aspire Engineering, 1023 Professional Park Drive, Brandon, Florida. I'm representing, I'm representing, representing the owner of the property. I've been sworn in. The, the project is unique, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. The project is very unique, we have done a lot of car washes throughout the state of Florida. Our main, when we do the car washes, we just build the car wash buildings with the vacuum spaces. We've been very successful doing the car washes. The one thing I want to clarify, the gas pumps that we are proposing is for customers. The one thing I want to clarify, the gas pumps that we are proposing is for customer convenience only. Thus not the main part of our business. The main part of the business is car wash business. As an incentive to customers who, who are the club members for the car wash member, if they have a car wash membership, they can use the gas pumps. Gas sales is not for the retail use. They're only for club membership, members of the car wash. If you have a club members like the Sam's Club membership, they have a card, card from the club, they can use of the gas pumps to put the gas. That's just to clarify, that's not the main part of the business. And we have gone through permitting through DOT as well as DEP for stormwater permitting. We do not, uh, we did not anticipate any issues. We, we have the DOT permit, both for the driveway as well as the drainage. And so stormwater is not an issue and stormwater is approved by the city also. The underground, uh, tanks for the gas, uh, underground gas tanks will be permitted through the DEP. DEP is a very strict requirements for permitting. We are currently going through the process of getting the underground, uh, uh, tanks permitted through DEP. And if you look at the plan sheet C dash six, which is a utility plan, we are, we are proposing the reclaimed tanks. There are three tanks in line. Most of the car wash water will be recycled. I would estimate about 70 to 80% of the car wash water will be recycled. Well, when you enter the car wash, the first wash you get is from the recycled water. The only fresh water I think they use in the car wash is the last cycle where the car is actually rinsed, final stage. And all the water will be recycled. We do have an, uh, oil water separator at the northeast corner of the property. If you look at the sheet, uh, C six, uh, near the gas pumps, just to the northeast side, uh, that's the proposed oil water separator. Before, uh, the, the water goes out to the sewer system, wastewater goes to the city sewer system. I think that's mainly, I wanted to bring attention to the fact that the gas pumps are customers' convenience only. It's not for the retail, uh, any public use. It's just for the car wash club members. Uh, I do have Ray Kero, who is, uh, uh, builds and develops these car washers, who can answer any specific questions you may have on the operations of the car wash itself. If you have any questions, we can answer. I have the traffic engineer also, uh, who can answer the questions about the traffic patterns.
Does anyone have questions for the applicant?
I think the answer is mine.
It's, I'll, I'll tell you, this is one of the first ones I think we are doing in Florida. Combination of car wash with the gas pumps to give, uh, convenience to the customers. And also the question of, uh, if somebody comes in to get a vacuum, just the vacuum, the, the, the people are not going to prevent them to get the vacuum. They can enter to get the vacuum done for their car without washing the cars. The employees are not going to prevent them, but you know, that's not the main part of the business. But the gas sales are for, uh, club members only.
How does the, the traffic pattern and, and traffic projections compare to the, uh, existing state? And by the existing state, I mean, what it would be if the businesses were functioning normally, not shut down?
Yeah, Libby can answer that. Libby, Libby has raised the hand. She's the traffic planner that we have on board. That's Libby Rodriguez.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I'm trying to pull that up. Yeah, so I think. Um, hang on one second. I'm just looking to see if I can answer that. This car wash, it's new land use, there's no way. Yeah, I, I think. I think what I did, because I was trying to get the driveway volumes and I think what I did was that I only, um, hang on a second. Sorry, I'm just pulling up multiple studies here, trying to enter your, oh, okay. Yep, I got it. Okay. Um, okay. So the existing use, the restaurant plus the, um, we just call it variety stores, just kind of general retail. In the PM peak hours, gee, it's, it's pretty close. It's, um, let me see, 44 and 46, six. The, the existing, what's out there now, if it was operating, it would have six, it would generate six more PM peak hour trips than this thing is generating.
And, and does this really function as a destination? Or is it mostly something that, that people do as their passing by anyways?
Yeah, um, I did not take off, uh, pass by trip capture. That's what you're asking about. Um, I didn't, I didn't take off for that. Um, certainly there would be pass by trip capture, but not as, I'm, I'm trying to be conservative, you know? So I didn't take any off. Um, but not as much as a non-club, um, type of, uh, car wash or certainly gas sales. You know, with, um, non-club gas sales, like 50% and, and in my opinion, more of traffic is pass by trip capture. So as you guys know, that that means, um, cars that are already on the road, going to another de- destination, you know, sometimes, you know, between home and work, will just go to a gas station, but that's not really, you know, the, the main purpose of their trip. And so that trip is not really attributable to the gas station. But in this case, um, for the sake of being conservative and because it is a club membership, um, we did the analysis as though these were all destination trips. Does that answer?
Yeah, I, I think so. One, one question, uh, operational question, uh, for the, the developer is this, then this really is a, a case where you have to buy a membership to stop in. You can't just pull off and decide you want to wash your car.
No, the membership is for the gas sales only. If you want to wash your car, yeah, you can wash your car, get the vacuum. You know, you just pay at the pay station. But most of the, I think most of the traffic comes as a membership to have, I don't know the number, about 30 to 50% is membership traffic. Uh, the, the, the public calls, if you're going on the road, yeah, you can pull in the pay station and pay and get the car washed. But you, you'll not be able to put the gas. You'll have to have a club membership to put the gas in.
And then in terms of traffic, I'm just, I'm, I'm just being conservative, you know, and just saying, hey, it's all 100% that, I mean, there's no pass by trip capture because, because those trips are usually subtracted. Plus ITE doesn't per se have, um, a pass by trip capture rate for automated car wash. So I would have had to estimate it from a similar, um, land use. And so I just, again, to be conservative, just did not subtract anything for that.
All right, any other questions for the applicant?
And let, this, this goes back to my original point, um, before the city attorney called me down on it. The, uh, that's why I was asking about the viability of the project based on gas sales. And what I've heard now is the gas is just an ancillary, uh, part of the, of the business and it's mainly a car wash, correct?
That's exactly correct. That's correct.
Okay, and that was, that was my, really the point I was getting at. Because then you have a difference in traffic, you have a difference in everything. If it's a, a full-blown gas station, uh, with a car wash attached to it versus a car wash with these courtesy gas pumps.
Right, definitely.
And that was my question when I was talking about viability.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No, but I, I do have a follow-up with Pat and it's actually has to do with the existing business. The fact that the adult, uh, location is going to be, I guess, uh, torn up, they're, they're, they're going to be zoned out. Is that correct? They can't come back into the, uh, the highway business or is that?
We do have, and I'd have to look in the code, but yeah, we still allow adult uses and we have, uh, specific, special code that governs that. Um, I can look real quick, but I'm gonna guess highway business is where it's allowed.
Adult, the good thing is it may not be able to come back.
Yeah, that, if it's allowed in any zoning, it's going to be highway business. I can take a look. It's probably conditional and all that.
Yeah, so you're getting the benefit of losing adult establishment.
Okay.
All right, well, if there's no further questions for the applicant, are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
We do have a raised hand in Zoom.
All right.
Or not, I think they just lowered their hand. So if anyone in Zoom wishes to make public comment, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, well, if there's no, no public comment, uh, do I hear a motion?
Oh. Who else is going to do it? I go ahead and, and make a motion to approve application 20 dash 139.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kuliannis?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Bee Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Severopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
I've lost my agendas.
Staff comments are after that. Yeah.
All right, that brings us down to item number five, staff comments.
Uh, no comments.
And item number six, board comments.
Just have one, one item to mention, uh, to Mr. Kuskudis.
Yes, sir.
I did locate the oil and water separator.
Okay. It's, I, you know, I, I don't look at, I can't see that small, but.
It's onsite.
All right. And the detail of it, it's on the last page also.
Exactly.
All right, if there's no further board comments, uh, I always forget this. Do I, can I just adjourn or do I need a vote to adjourn?
You can just adjourn.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.